I'm so sorry. I'm so used to saying that.
That's all right. I've been gone for a long time.
That's why it took me so long to get hitched, too. Anyway, this time I want to recognize our Honorable Commissioner Larry Crawford for the invocation, and then Commissioner Stedham for our place of flag.
Let's bow to prayer, please. God, we're so grateful that we're able to be here tonight. We thank you for the strength. We thank you for the good help that we're able to be here. God, we know there's many across our nation and around this world that are hurting. And we lift those folk up there in Hawaii that suffer in the fires and the devastation that's taking place there on that island. Others within our community that are suffering with illnesses and sickness. God, we pray a touch from you on thee. Bless this time that we have together. May all that be goodness, safety, for the betterment of our community and our citizens. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
I want to face the flag, pop our hands salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When the board opens, please record your prayers. Has every member reported their presence?
Eighteen present, six absent.
Thank you. We have a forum to conduct business this evening. Our first order of business, item number one, resolution to consider amendments to the Southern-
I don't think it must be, but.
I believe so. Maybe you can turn this mic down.
When I turn this microphone on, that's what it's doing. I never spin my microphone on when we talk here. When I turn it on, it's like.
Well, they got the shares, but I didn't know what was spinning down now.
Can I just stand at Joseph's?
You can. Yeah, that's exactly right. Are y'all, are they not?
We only have an advocate here, so.
I'll stop while that works. That works. Okay?
So can we not use the mics at all?
Not by me.
We have these. Okay. Okay, that's fine.
She can use Joe McMurray's.
It won't work either. They will work if it's not on.
Okay.
All the mics off.
This is still on. Do you want me to turn it off?
She's got them all muted.
I know. You can hear me.
Okay, I'm gonna.
That one's working. It's better.
Is it? Yeah, I know. Somebody's gone through the speakers. Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and. You want to go ahead and resume, or you want me to next please? Okay. Okay. Well, until we get it worked out, we'll go ahead and resume with item number one to consider amendments to the Southern County zoning plan. And this will be on the board. Then after this, we'll break for the purposes of public hearing on the zoning amendments. So when the board opens, please cast your vote on item number one. Sponsored by Commissioner Catton and myself. It's not going on. I guess it was a big old fashion. Roll call. And this is the long time I have to do tonight, anyway. Yes, because you know, hit your, I'm just gonna say it for instance.
Acre.
Yes. And that was our experiment, too.
Hang on one second.
I broke it.
Let me try that again, okay?
Okay, everybody hear me? All right. Okay, when the board opens, please cast your vote on item number one. And then we'll recess for public hearing on the zoning amendments. Commissioner Hayes.
Hey.
Has every member voted? Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk?
Eighteen yes, six absent.
Having received necessary majority, item one is adopted. We stand in recess for the purpose of public hearing on the zoning amendments. Mr. Corbett from the left.
Thank you so much. We have one individual request for a rezoning from Brian Bledsoe. His request is to rezone the back half of his property from R1 to B3. And his front half with his existing gym is already zoned B3. So this went to our planning commission last month. This is on Fort Henry Drive and Dillow Drive. Guess you consider that maybe midway area of the county. Again, you can see the footprint of the buildings that he owns where the star is. That's all his property. It is an open field, and he would like it all to be rezoned B3. It went to our meeting last month. We did have a family come who owns the majority of the land to the north. That wedge and the bigger track. It's, all of this is in your minutes. I believe we resolved all of his questions. So basically, if this were to be developed like a parking lot, there would be plenty of buffering, and that's, that was his concern. So it comes to you unanimously from our planning commission. There's a picture of the law. It says empty right now. I think I might have two more pictures. There you go.
I want to open the floor up for questions for you. And if Mr. Bledsoe would like to address the commission, I'll write him up as well. Commissioner Jones, you ready, ma'am, sir?
I just live right out the street from this. I watched Mr. Bledsoe take this property and develop it into a good property. It was a former telephone company building, and he's taken it. It came up for sale. He moved across the road from a smaller building. Has grown this property, and they've done, they filled in and cleaned it up quite a bit. I've watched it since I've been there. And I would ask our commission to support this change in zone.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mrs. Corbett? Just for Mr. Bledsoe to like to address the commission.
Okay. He's here if you have any questions.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Bledsoe? Saying now we're ready to vote on amendment number one. When the board opens, please cast your vote on amendment number one. Has every member voted? Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk?
Eighteen yes, six absent.
Having received necessary majority, per passage of amendment number one is adopted.
Okay. Thank you so much. Also, in your packet are two minor zoning amendments. I might have it in different order of my slideshow. If you want to bring that up. I think the first amendment should be. Okay. Well, in your packet is a big matrix. The only thing we're changing is, I think this is an old leftover remnant from an old zoning ordinance. Right now, we require a 50-foot front yard setback off state highways, which are classified as a material road. I reviewed this with our fellow city planners and other counties. They do not have this provision. It's just the normal setback regardless of what road you're on. So it should just be changed to 30. So we would like to strike out in the zoning amendment for all ag and residential zones that the minimum setback should be 30 off the front. So basically, what's highlighted in yellow, you would just strike out 50 foot. And of course, this went to all three regional planning commissions, and they all recommended in favor of this change. Because you have to understand, state right of ways, usually their right of way is already very wide. They have a larger grass, grassy shoulder than typical county roads, so it's kind of overkill.
Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Corbett on the amendment? Is this, is this something we're, can we take all of these together? Is this something we're gonna have to vote on individually? Is this something we can?
I would prefer you vote on them individually.
Individually? Okay. That's totally fine.
So that's how it was presented to the planning commission.
When we get our computer back, I'll ask the board to open. Does anyone have any other questions for Mrs. Corbett on that?
Yeah, sure. You already have it in your packet. You don't have to put it on the screen if you don't want to. The next amendment is to amend our buffer ordinance, which applies to any commercial property, anything non-single-family or duplex property. As you know, they, we require for any new construction buffering if it affects other residential or ag uses. Obviously, you don't have to buffer against another commercial use. A few years ago, it was reduced to eight foot, and we have found an eight-foot buffer just isn't wide enough. I don't know any evergreen tree that serves the purpose of buffering that will limit itself to that eight foot. What ends up happening is they plant it too close to the property line, and then the limbs end up on someone else's land, and that becomes a problem. So the planning commission recommends going back to the 15-foot buffer. This has nothing to do with the setbacks for construction of the building or in lieu of, or in addition to. It's actually still within their setback. So it should not create any more situation where they're losing property that they can develop. It just allows them more yard space and better planting when they plant their trees. And the 15-foot buffer just means, you know, no structures, no signage, nothing within that 15-foot other than grass and trees. And again, this only applies if the commercial property that's seeking approval affects a residential land use or zone. So we are just changing that language. And in addition to this, we have found, especially businesses that are not of corporate franchise, where they already have their prescribed landscaping plan, but for our local businesses, they come to us and ask us, what kind of trees should I plant? Well, I'm not a landscape architect or horticulturist, so we looked at a lot of research. We attended a conference at our annual planning conference. A landscape architect presented the proper trees that are native to Tennessee that do well. And so when you pick trees that are not native to Upper East Tennessee, they're not gonna live. And you spend that money, and then one season they're brown. So in addition to this, we have a supplemental guideline, which will be at the back of the ordinance. It's just a guideline, but it outlines the native Tennessee trees that, and you can, it just gives you a list to choose from. So you know what they look like, but you know what they, how big they will get. So you know where to plant them based on how much land you have. So we are calling it Appendix G, because that was the next letter in order of the zoning code, and it's in your packet. Very proud of Luke for doing all of the research on this, and we bounced it with our other communities, of course, and some of our landscape architects that we know personally that have done work for Sullivan County. So that's what we are recommending. And again, this went to all three regional planning commissions.
Ready for a few questions?
Sure.
Sure. Recognize Commissioner King.
Out of the eastern hemlock, there is a bug, woolly adalgia, which has killed most of the hemlock in Upper East Tennessee.
Okay.
So I wouldn't suggest just planting hemlocks for buffers because they won't live.
Well, they're also pretty expensive, but most people choose Leyland cypress, which actually aren't native. They seem to do okay, but they do take a lot of care at first. And if they're not properly planted in state, they'll just uproot. But they, they're a great buffer as far as serving that purpose. We just wanted to present what is native to Tennessee, so that when you go to the nursery, the nursery should really provide what's good for our community. But if you don't know, and you're trying to plan your site plan, we don't want them, or discouraging them to choose trees that don't do well in our soil.
Is this just a suggestion?
It's just a guideline. Just a guideline.
If I go out there and plan all this stuff, and then somebody's gonna come to me and say, no, you can't have these, it's not.
It's just a guideline. It says in the heading. It is just a guideline, because people, unless you've grown up here, unless you're just an expert or really studied it, they don't know. And we're constantly being asked, and I don't want to design it for them. We can get ourselves in trouble by designing people's property, you know, so.
All right.
Okay.
Commissioner Means.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the work that you all put into this. I can tell it was a lot. I just had a quick question. Why did you decide to jump from eight feet to 15? Why not somewhere in between there?
Well, that's what it used to be. But if you look at some of these evergreen trees, the width that they end up upon mature growth are even larger than 15 feet. So if you chose maybe a magnolia, it may not get that big, or a holly, it may not get that big. Those are very slow-growing trees. But if you choose a Leyland cypress or a pine, they're very broad, and they end up growing over the property line, or they grow over your parking lot or over the dumpster area. So we want to provide pictures and the species, the, you know, all of their standard height and width upon mature growth, so people can choose what to plant in the appropriate location on their property. So that's why. Eight foot is just way too narrow.
Commissioner King.
You haven't talked anything about Bradford pears, which is not a, really a native species to East Tennessee.
So they don't deserve, they don't serve as a buffer.
A lot of people plant them as buffers. I mean, you look at all the yards, and then from the yards, they go out into the fields, and then the fields are full of them now.
Right. So we did not present on the list.
Thorn on it, if it's about this long.
Yeah.
You run over it with any kind of equipment, you've got a flat tire, so.
They're all over that out parcel by Food City.
Exactly.
Now, they don't serve a buffer because they're not evergreen.
No, they're not evergreen, but still, people, they plant them in their yards, and they look nice, and they start, those limbs break out, and then, but anyway, there's beginning to be a problem of taking over.
For sure.
Fields. So.
Yeah. I agree.
For information.
I agree. Yes.
Commissioner Aker.
Thank you, Chairman Proton. You know, sitting here talking, listening to this, and obviously Dwight King has some great information and knowledge about trees and everything, so. I would say, I want to make sure next time there's an opening, we need to have Dwight placed on the planning commission with you.
Yes, so we've done our planning commission before.
All his questions?
Yeah. He's done his term. He's done his.
And then another commissioner here is a little shy and everything. They want to ask, you know, the woolly critter that Dwight was talking about and everything. What's the best, how can we kill that, you know, and everything?
I think those are questions for our ITX center. I mean, Chris Ramsey would be the expert locally that I would probably refer folks.
Is anybody still using DVD or anything like that?
Don't think he can.
I think, I think we've taken.
Thank you.
I gave you the benefit of.
Gabble, gabble, sir.
Hey, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go through the whole thing and never gabble anybody down. Anyone else have any questions, Mr. Corbett?
Given our current, our electronic status, we may have to do a roll call vote.
Well, you can do it all at once if you'd like.
I'm asking, would it be okay if we did a roll call vote on all three? Would that be sufficient for you?
That's fine.
But she has it on the board to do them individually, but we may not have that option.
That's fine.
Because it just went, it just went gone again. So. Good.
Well, we've had some storms. That usually does it. I'm fine with roll call vote if you want to get started. Ms. Teresa.
Acre.
Yes.
Catton.
Yes.
Carr. Accent. Cole.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Cross. Accent. Crosswatt.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horn. Accent. Iverson.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Locke. Accent. McMurray. Accent. Means.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Slagle.
Yes.
Stedham.
Yes.
Vanover. Accent. Ward.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Eighteen yes, six absent.
Having received the necessary majority, cases two, three, and four are adopted.
Thank you so much. That's all.
Have any?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public hearing for zoning. That takes us into our regular calendar for the work session. We have a public comment sheet. I'm sorry, I didn't pick it up. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the commission? Saying without objection, the public comment portion of the work session is closed. That takes us into our regular calendar. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Aker on item number two.
Thank you, Chairman Proton. This resolution, Zane and I have worked on, and he could be here. He's at a Farm Bureau meeting, I believe, tonight, something like that. But I will read it, because I think it's very important, especially in light of us asking the taxes that we did. Resolution to authorize Sullivan County clerk to waive late fees and interest on monthly hotel motel tax collection submitted by lodging providers for the first 90 days following a taxes implementation. We're at Sullivan County, Tennessee, implementing a county hotel motel tax on July 1st, 2023, and whereas under rules governing that tax, hoteliers and others required to collect the tax from tenants must submit their collection to Sullivan County clerk no later than the 20th each month for taxes collected the prior month. And whereas the first such monthly deadline will be August 20th, 2023. And whereas the process of collecting the tax and submitting collections to Sullivan County clerk is new and may include a learning curve and creation of or upgrades to accounting procedures used by lodging providers. Now therefore being resolved, Sullivan County Commission authorized Sullivan County clerk to waive fees charged for missing monthly deadline for submission of collections to the clerk, as well as interest charged, but only after total collections due be submitted no later than October 20th, 2023. All resolutions conflicts herewith be and same rescinded insofar as such conflict exists. This kind of came up between a couple conversations some of us had with some of the tourists and hoteliers, and then Teresa Jacobs. And honestly, everyone's really excited. I can tell you, we've had some really good, just cursory conversations about maybe how to do these things. As you all know, we're gonna go through budget here in a few months, try to get a plan in place and all that. But, and we knew there'd probably be a learning curve, and there was. By the time the resolution got passed, signed, sent to the state officially received, then the state had to put in a process for our county. The notices went out three days before July 1st. So obviously, there's a little bit of that. And what this does really is, you know, we want to do this right, because this is, this is still an opportunity for us to really promote and use some of these funds that will be collected for tourism and such. And so we just felt like talking to Ms. Jacobs and going through the things, so she doesn't have to do it on an individual basis or come back and forth and do all that. Let's just, doesn't mean that they can't pay their taxes. It means we're not gonna go after them with late fees or penalties or anything for the first 90 days, as everyone gets their processes in place and everything like that. So that's why we wanted to do this resolution tonight and everything. Like, any questions?
You've heard the explanation. Recognize Commissioner Jones. Resolution number two. Commissioner Jones.
I don't have any problem for resolution. I do have a problem, though. I drove up here for that meeting, and the door was locked. I thought it was a public meeting. Couldn't get in.
Well, sorry about that. Well, sorry about that.
Well, uh, I just think that's an issue, yeah.
Well, talk to me afterwards, Zane.
I didn't know you were the one that, one in your office. Uh, I just wanted, uh, other commissioners to know that that was a public hearing and it was a club ended up being a closed, locked door hearing.
Actually, I agree, I disagree, I don't know if it was a public hearing.
Uh, it was announced that our commission named that we were going to have a public meeting.
No, it's just announced, they were going to be there and everything, but, so.
Anyone's, if anyone wishes to ask a question on the resolution, uh, press your button, Commissioner whoever, do you want, on amendment, resolution number two?
That's the question I've got. I know the first nine days following the tax implementation, I'm sure if, if they don't pay within the ninety days, um, they'll be getting a letter from the county attorney, is that correct?
That or the clerk's office, yeah.
We will contact them first and try to collect, you know, do our best to collect it.
And then if they don't pay, it'll be passed on to the county attorney.
Yes.
And if they don't pay that, same court process as we go through.
I don't know what the process would be at that point, I, I assume, but I don't know.
Yeah, realistically, we, we, we had the ninety days because, uh, realistically, they're more worried about the first thirty to sixty days, uh, just trying to get, they're, they're paying it, they're just trying to get it in time. Okay. Because of the way the software program is. So we just felt like, it doesn't give them leeway not to pay the taxes. We're just not going to go after them for penalties as long as you're.
My question is after the ninety days.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
After the ninety days, they'll be getting a letter from.
Yes, sir.
And then they got so much time.
Yep.
And then Dan will lead.
Yep.
Getting involved after that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, yep, yeah, it's not, it's not a, uh, free, uh, leeway for ninety days. It's just like in July, when they're all trying to collect it right now, so we talked with one hotelier that, uh, corresponded with, tried to understand it, they probably won't make it August twenty to get all their stuff in. And so they didn't want to, um, yeah, uh, any fees or, you know, was there any way to try to?
Is it going to make their responsibility to file this or are we going to be sending them a letter?
No, that's what, it took a while to get the, in the state system and the computer system and the software, as long as they collect it, they automatically can get it and everything. Yep.
You, you made a comment that the letters went out three days before July first.
I think they received, she said she received or something.
Yeah. Um, one of the reasons for that was, um, the resolution was passed in by, and T C A code states that we have to, uh, the, the commission has to approve that tax calculation form, which we did the next meeting in Ju, in June. What was that, June twenty-something? Anyway, as soon as we got that passed, we assembled the letter and, just want to make that clear.
Anyone else seek recognition on item number two?
I mean, I'm, I'm all for consent because we, we'd like to go ahead and get it going.
You move consent. Sponsor moves consent counter on item number two, any objection to item number two being placed on consent counter. Without objection, item number two is placed on consent counter. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Cole on item number three.
Thank you Chairman Proton. This is a grant, it's a collaborative grant, and Solon County Sheriff's Office and British School of Tennessee Department of Law are on it, it's a violent crime intervention grant. We're going to try to implement the technology to reduce violent crimes. This is the sheriff's office portion of the grant, five hundred percent, four thousand six hundred. The last whereas has to break down on capital being the budget. No matching funds, no new money. It's all right with the commission, I'd like to put this on the consent.
Sponsor moves consent counter on item number three, any objection to item number three being placed on consent counter. Without objection, item number three is placed on consent counter. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Stedham on item number four.
Thank you Mr. Proton. This resolution, the draft resolution's in the process, got a lot of work to get to be done. Uh, we'll be going back to budget, uh, get some numbers plugged in, and sit down and talk about, uh, a whole resolution and all. Just wanted to make sure we got the information out. We do have a packet for, uh, the sheriff's office centers for a pay scale, uh, for some information, get you thinking about a few things, and we'll move on from there.
Heard the explanation on item number four, does anyone have any questions, comments for the sponsor of item number four? Anyone seeking recognition on item number four? I'm, I'm, I'm asking if anyone seeking recognition on item number four, and I'm going to recognize the sponsor, okay. Commissioner Glover.
Gary, you said this was going back to the budget committee, right?
Yes.
Okay. Why didn't we run this to the budget committee and start?
We're, we're just putting it out there for information, uh. Speaking, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
We put it out here for information, uh, just to get it out there, so where it would be in here, we'd have, anyone had any question. So everybody know we're working on this, taking the budget, get the numbers plugged in. Uh, Mr. Kennedy is out currently on leave with a new stunt, so getting numbers together and everything else, that window's just trying to get it there now. This is disinformation, let everyone know that we're working on this, okay?
Commissioner Stedham, I recognize you, uh, final copy on item number four, whatever action you wish to take.
I think Mr. King has a question.
Okay, he just now popped up. Commissioner King.
Thank you. Jerry, we sat in there in the budget committee, why, why wasn't brought forward while we was doing the budget for last year?
A lot of the, uh, fortunately for us, our, our finance department was on top of it, got our budget done early. We passed our budget earlier than everyone in our surrounding area and unbeknownst to us is, they did a lot of pay raises in their budgets for, uh, their police departments, sheriff's departments, and that's put us underneath, way underneath those current, uh, offices, whether it be Kingsport, Parker County, all those other ones. So basically, we're behind the eight ball now, we're in one of the lowest paying counties. And right now, the applicant pool for law enforcement is a very small pool. As we know, the T H P just increased their base pay to sixty-five thousand dollars a year. So what we have is a age group of twenty-one to thirty that you're normally recruiting for law enforcement under, same thing the military's having now. That generation group is not interested in service, they're interested, they're not interested in benefits. You can, we've got one of the best benefit packages out there, but they're interested in that paycheck in two weeks what it's going to be. So the recruit and retain, we're going to have to be up there with everyone else, uh, in those areas, we're not going to get that, uh, we've lost several to T H P already. So we're seventeen down, the last number I got, we were seventeen down. I think if you look in this packet, they've lost thirty-five in the last six, seven months. How many have we lost T H P? I can't answer, Travis, you have it, Tony, y'all have a number? It keeps going up, they keep getting applicants on that, so I don't know the exact number, but it's been several. Okay. I, I was, you know, here we worked through our budget, here we got down, we pieced it, and then, you know, a week later, they don't, just, just, you know, what, I just can't see why we couldn't have done this. I mean, y'all, the sheriff, I'm seeing this coming. It, 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 he's talking to the other sheriffs in the, in this area, everybody's in the same boat. And when, when Worthing County started it, and it seemed like, you know, all of a sudden everybody's jumped on board, everybody's losing people. And, and, and then not only to, you know, back and forth, Worthing County's coming here and we're, you know, they're hiring from us, so. It, it wasn't that long ago, we dealt with the same thing with the EMS, and we had to increase their pay, and that pretty well stopped the bleeding of losing people out of that. So this is something we got to address, whether we like addressing it, in fact, it wasn't addressed during the budget, uh, we, we have this in front of us now, we're going to have to deal with it over this next year. So we need to take this on, and I understand your frustration with that, well, I've heard it from quite a few of the commissioners when I spoke to them about these things. And if the bottom line is, I, I understand, I, I understand what you're saying, I mean, hear you, but right now, we're going to have to take this back up and look at it and prepare. And we're, we're going to have to look at this not only in the sheriff's department, we're going to have to look at it at every county office that we have out there because the pool of applicants for every job is getting smaller and smaller. And if you look around, the, the deployable people we have in this county are looking like me and Herschel yourself. They're not teenagers, they're not twenty and thirty-year-olds, we're, we're dealing with an aging population here, we're losing a lot of our youth that are leaving, but right now, service to community is not something that we have. Those that are dedicated, want to go in law enforcement, we're having to fight with every, everyone around for that. Knox County had to go, what, twenty-five dollars an hour, starting salary? But their economy is different than ours, it costs more to live there, so we're going to have to take this on. And I feel your frustration on that. Her, we worked hard on the budget, administrative committee, executive committee, budget, and our finance department, but this is where we're at today because we finished early and everyone else did theirs late and came out on top of us. So that's where we're at, now we're back behind the eight ball, we'll have to figure out a plan, come, come back around and get us back on top and fix this recruiting and retention problem.
Well, and I may be wrong, I know that Mr. Bailey over here could probably tell us better than anybody, but was anybody from the sheriff's department asking for more money to do this with?
Currently?
No. In our last budget. Did they ever come to, they never come to me and asked me if, you know, did we get more money in there for us?
If they didn't come up in the budget last year because they didn't realize they were going to be, that we're going to be this far behind in the largest law enforcement in East Tennessee was going to be this far behind Kingsport, uh, Lizbethan, uh, all these county offices around us and the cities. We, there was no idea we were going to be that far behind them. A lot of places did a huge tax increase to get their law enforcement a, a raise this year, and guess what? They're not going to be able to catch up with us if we give a raise to ours now, it'll be three or four, five years before we're back in the heated battle with them for the small amount of applicants out there on it, so.
But I think if you look at the cities, the cities will always be ahead of us because usually they've got more money and they can generate more money. So if we do it, they'll turn around and do it, it's just like the teachers. When, you know, the teachers, the same thing, when we up our pay scale, they up theirs, and it's just a continuing battle, up and down, the way, you know, so, there's got to be some word that we can get into a medium, some word.
Hey, that's, that's why we're bringing this back, you know, talking to, uh, a lot of people throughout the county and different departments, talking to other law enforcement, and talking to our deputies over there. You've been in the jail here, you just toured the jail again here, what, last week? I would encourage every commissioner to go back in there, it's been a while since I went in there. I toured it last week and that's shocking all, walking back in there and seeing that, you know, what our corrections officers had to deal with, it's pretty shocking, it, it brings you back to that reality. But this is a, uh, public safety issue, if we can't recruit and retain them, we're losing money because we take them and send them to the academy and then we come back and we lose them for a few dollars to Lizbethan or Greenville or Kingsport or Green County. It doesn't matter where they go, T H P, it's going to be hard, we're going to lose people with T H P, there's no way we can ever match the starting salary of sixty-five thousand dollars a year. But they will eventually fill up every seat that they need now and we'll be fine, you know, the bleeding will still happen every year because we're going to have people retiring, but we have to take care of Solon County and try to fix this for us. And that's why we need this conversation now. We can't afford to wait till next budget to deal with this issue. Isn't it oversight and should have been taking care of this one? Our, our sights were set, we are moving, we moved forward, nobody saw much of this coming, and this is where we're at, so we're going to have to deal with it at this point. Same thing at highway department with C D L drivers, same thing we have with, uh, people retiring in the county and trying to find suitable replacements for them. Every department has those issues right now. But this is a public safety issue, down seventeen patrol officers, and here's where we're at. Not only is it a public safety issue, it's, it's costing us financially too, but the public safety issue's the big part. Last year we spent in overtime, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars in overtime, an equal amount in compensation in comp time was over five hundred thousand dollars in that. Now you can't reduce how the sheriff's department, they're never able to reach dues totally out of overtime. Murders, missing people that we do big, have to do a lot of hours on, is going to happen. But that's a million dollars, basically, in overtime we paid out this year. So that's where we're at. We do have funding coming back to us, the grant for the school resource officers, so there's funding available and things available that's going to help us take this up to the next level and cut this bleeding that we're having with retention and recruiting.
I think we did a big step and we obligated seventy million dollars to build a new jail. I mean, when you go in the new jail and you see the, the design of it, it's going to be a whole lot safer for our deputies.
It, it is going to be a ninety day situation, what they're currently dealing with, it'll be better controlled, safer place to be for both our, our corrections officers and for our, uh, people who are inmates are there. Some of those people are, are going to come back out in society, will be able to do things, as you know, you said in all those jail committees, some rehabilitation, classes, G E Ds, some things to get some of these people keep coming out of that revolving door. That's not going to happen till spring of twenty-five.
So, but the thing of it is, with the, the price of materials mainly, and we're probably going to have to put another twenty million dollars in that jail before we open it. And then that's not going to count, the, the office equipment and all the equipment we've got about to put in there. So we're going to have to do another bond issue sometime early next year to do all this with, with, uh, some other things that we're going to do, like, uh, the, uh, building in Kingsport, that's two point six million dollars. We're going to have to put some money in the, uh, uh, school building up here to keep it up running, so I would say another three million, you know, so that's going to make a lot of bit of money we're going to have to come up with for next year.
And, and we're going to have to go in and fix some of the things in the current jail that, uh, will be used in, when the new facility's open.
Exactly.
There's going to have to be a lot of work done there. We have a lot of things ahead of us in this county, but here's the one thing about it, we're a county that can get the job done. Our first thing we need to be concerned about and we can take care of now is fix this recruiting or retention problem for them. And the number one thing that you hear with this younger generation recruiting them coming in and people jumping is, hey, we're at eighteen fifty, eighteen thirty, and everyone around you's at twenty-two, twenty, there's, there's no reason for them to come here. Twenty-five-year-olds are not worried about T C R S, they are not worried about medical insurance. And in fact, at twenty-five, they're still going to be on their parents' insurance, health insurance. So, you know, we can thank the federal government for causing part of this problem coming on, not to take a podium on it, but why, yeah, we have a lot of things to fix in this county. Right now, we need to look at this and see what we can do to fix this recruiting issue before it becomes a public safety issue that we really have over our head.
And I don't think it's only the sheriff's department, there's every department that we've got in Solon County needs people.
That's correct.
And, and if we do this for the sheriff's department, I think we've got to do it across the board. And if we do it across the board, um, then we're going to have to go back and raise taxes to pay for it. That's the only way, that I see that we can pay for it.
And, uh, you know, I'll agree with you on part of that, Dwight, part of this is we need to take care of this, these are certified officers, corrections officers, we're not coming in asking for clerks, maintenance people, this is for uniformed officers that are sitting there, that have to be in the jail and out of patrol. In fact, uh, the conversation we had, the sheriff would like to do it for everyone. And when I came back and I spoke to him, one of the things I brought back is, one, talking to other commissioners, talking to people out there, we need to keep this focused on one thing, and that is fixing the recruiting or retention for uniform officers. So. So, while it would be nice to be able to sit there and give everyone in that jail a pay raise that works in the Sheriff's Department, me personally, I see the scope of this as coming down to corrections officers, patrol officers, and the small medical staff we have in there. That, two, the other one I brought to sheriff was, that I heard was, the ones who are on salary would not be included in this pay raise, just the hourly people going up. So, that's where we came to from starting, and we were conversating from everyone down and to me, the scope of this needs to be narrowed down to keep that within that. And then, we can deal with, after we fix, have to fix that problem, we need to be looking at every department, what we need to do on that for everyone else and do one for everyone else. These guys are just like everyone else. Not everyone can be a law enforcement. They're a group that has to be certified and have to be out there doing their job. The difference is, these, if we have this low in our patrol, 17 down, it's lives on the line. That's time on answering a call. If you're out in the county, if you live in the city, you've got the city taking care of you, but if you live out in the county and we're short on patrol, that extra five minutes because someone has to come from somewhere else is a matter of life and death for someone. You know that. It's, I mean, that's common sense for us on that. So, this is why this is probably near and dear to me is it is a public safety issue that we need to address. And we can take it to budget, we can beat on this all night, but we need to take it to budget, look at the numbers, and then move on from there and bring something back to the commission with numbers and the factual what we have. That's the scope of what I'm looking at for this resolution.
We've tried this before, and if you're not equal with everybody in Sullivan County, it's not gonna work. We've tried this. Pay scales, we've tried it, one year, didn't work. So, I don't see that you can separate anybody out, even at the Sheriff's Department. I'm gonna get extra money, but nobody sits beside of me is not. I don't see how you can do it. I mean, everybody's just as important as the next guy sitting beside of them.
I understand where you're coming from, coming from an HR area, but sometimes you have to pay for that certification for it, for those people that are in there, to get them in the job, to retain them in the job. Clerical, and I understand, we need, if you look at inflation, we gave, what, 5% this year, we gave 5% last year. Every bit of that was sucked up. So, that 5%, they bring home, what, 4% of it, the rest of it goes taxes? And then, what happened to the economy is sucked up the rest of it and then some, so it was well over 4%. We can beat this to death all night, but it's going to budget to get some numbers and look at it from there and bring it back to the commission.
One of those things people need to realize is, if we're gonna do this, that it's probably gonna, why don't you go back and raise taxes to do it?
And we'll look at the numbers when we get there. We have some funding options, the school resource money and those, so... But we don't need to blame this and drag out this meeting. Me and you could talk about this forever, but we'll take it to budget, come back with something on it, and we'll go from there.
Mr. Slade?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Stidham, what is your intent with this resolution?
Right now, it's just a draft.
And why is it on the calendar at all?
Well, we thought we may have, we had some technical issues getting the numbers that we needed for this. Mr. Kennedy's out, so we had planned on putting it on there for first reading, but right now, the intent is just a draft resolution. We'll take it to budget and bring it back as a full resolution.
So, this will need to come off the calendar and go to Budget Committee, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay. I would maybe remove it from the voting calendar and put it back in Budget Committee. Second, I've heard you mention in your comments that, what is the scope of this? I've heard it's armed officer, or sorry, uniformed officers. I've heard it's everybody, I've heard it's the whole county, I've heard it's, what is it?
When we take it to budget, we're gonna sit there and hammer this out and bring you back a resolution to, with a better scope of what we have on. What the sheriff asked and asked for everyone, after we talked to a lot of commissioners and started looking at some of the base numbers, we had everything from a separate pay scale for corrections to help them maintain it, and maybe more than patrol. And the Sheriff's Department was real quick to come back to choose and let us know that that would cause a morale problem inside, they'd had those issues, and prefer not to do that, so it was one of the things. So, this is a draft, this is just information to get people thinking about what direction we need to go on it.
Yeah, it definitely needs a lot of work.
Yes.
And if it's okay, I wanna speak out term here. You made comment about removing it, that would have to be done at the commission meeting anyways, that's not something we can do with this particular one.
Commissioner Irison, you recognize her?
I guess my comments are this, I'm willing to work with the sheriff. I'd love to work with the sheriff and say what we can do. I got no problem with that at all. I think this is completely backwards. I think that we're telling a constitutional office what he needs, and I think that he needs to come and say, this is what I need. I mean, by us doing this resolution, it takes out his option of doing bonuses, incentives, you know, he might do differential pay between patrol and the jail, which, I mean, for me, if they're gonna tell me I'm gonna make the exact same money to sit in that jail and have to do that, or sit in a car by myself, there's a different risk there, but in my mind, it's a pretty easy choice. And that's why they say they have such low seniority in the jail system. But we're telling him what he needs instead of the other way around, and I think that's backwards. And I think that, you know, from last time I talked to him, their office hasn't talked to Larry Bailey's office to look at some options. You mentioned EMS, and that's exactly what they did. They went and said, hey, where's some of this money, what can we do, give us some options? I mean, that's a great source of information that they're not using, and I think that's something that needs to happen, but again, my problem is, I don't wanna sit here and say, okay, well, Scott Murray, let's fix your problem now too. I mean, they need to, they need to tell us their problems. I don't think, I think we're going way beyond our scope. And our scope should be, you submit a budget, we either approve or deny your budget, and we move on. So, if they have an amendment to their budget, they'd like to say, I wanna change my budget to this much because I wanna do this with my employees, I'm fine with that. And I think that has merit, and we need to look at that. But this is not our problem. It is a county problem, but it's the sheriff that needs to figure out how to fix this and not us telling him how to, because that's not fair to him. We can't, we can't tell him how to do it. Even if we do this, we can't tell him how to run this department.
I agree. We don't micromanage.
Well, exactly. And this is, in my mind, this is what we're doing, and then we got a resolution that says we're gonna let Budget Committee do something. Well, that's not a resolution. I mean, a resolution is after it comes out of budget, they say, this is what we wanna do, and we all look at it and vote on it. So, I mean, I understand your heart's in the right place, and I'm for that, that moving forward and helping that department, but we're doing this backwards. This really is not our responsibility, our job. The sheriff needs to do it because if we do this, everybody's gonna expect us to come in and help the highway and help the maintenance and help everybody else. They were voted in, they've got a job to do. The biggest part of their job is their budget and their finances and what they're asking for, and I'd love to help them, but I don't wanna lead them, and I don't wanna micromanage them and tell them what they have to do. We're not, I don't like this direction.
Commissioner Glover?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gary, when we went through the process of the budget, the administrative committee, the sheriff had some money left over, and Mr. Bailey was sitting out there to table with me, Ms. Means, Mr. Harvey, some others, Mr. Murray and Carr and so forth. And we stuck our hands out and said, listen, you've got some money here, and you are more likely to use this money any way that you see fit. If you want to give it to jail employees, to give them a raise, you've got people in this room here that'll do it for you. And you can give them jail employees a raise, whatever you wanna do with it, and then when we do the 5%, if it passes, that's an incentive on top of that. And that was the first meeting we had. I was told no. The second meeting we had, I even stuck my hand out again, and everybody in there said, hey, you've got this money laying here, you can transfer it over, you can spend it in your jail, you can give it to your other employees, whatever you wanna do with it. And I was told that we will accept whatever the county commission does for us. And that's what I was told. But I wanna prove to everybody in this room that we've done our job since we've been here. In 2017 and '18, when we came in as commissioners, and the sheriff came in the same time we did, the Sheriff's Department budget was $21,140,064. In 2018 and '19, that's the first year that we did the budget, it went to $21,205,133. In 2019 and '20, $23,307,66. In 2020 and '21, this is when we really kicked in, $23,374,849. Okay? In '21, '22, it went from $23,374 to $23,964,39. In 2022 and '23, it went from $23,966 to $26,205,673. And this year, in '23, '24, it went from $26,205 to $27,900,937. That's almost a 30% increase in five years since we've been here. And we said, like I said, we don't micromanage, like you said, but we're funding. And this year, we funded more than what the sheriff asked for. We gave that money. The county commission, Budget Committee, all members worked together, we voted on the budget, we passed it, we funded exactly what was asked for. But we also stuck our hands out and said, hey, this is your money here, you can use it any way you want to. If you wanna use it for raises, you can transfer it, bring it in, we'll pass it. But we've done our job.
Yes, we have.
And I'm not gonna sit here and let certain people over there get passed over. He works over there, Tony works over there, Michael works over there. That's not fair. They put it in the foreign order every morning just like the rest of them do. And they go to work every day just like the rest of them do.
That would include them, they are certified officers.
It doesn't matter. There's, what about your dispatchers? What if they walk off the job?
And what makes you think it's the budget to sit down and discuss it? This is a big, big issue?
I can tell you right now, if this goes to the budget and it goes through the process, whatever amount that goes over there, we're gonna do it for every county employee. If we have to do a tax increase, that's what we'll do. I've been here four years, and I'm not loaded for tax increases, but we're not gonna do it with the people that way, especially the people that work over there, there's some employees that work over there that's, you know, that needs money just like others do. And we're gonna do it across the board, we're gonna do it for teachers too, for county employees too. We'll do it for them. But one big thing through this process is, the personnel account went from $11 million to over $16 million. So, that's why I bid money.
We added in school resource officers, our first, one of our first resolutions in our first session was school resource officers.
And here again, Gary, we can get money on the general fund, pay for that. We paid for half of it, the school department paid for half of it. I'm not against, listen, I wouldn't work over there for water making. I'll be the first one to admit, I will not work over there for water making. And I shouldn't sit here and ask them to do it, and I'm not going to, but we're not gonna cherry pick, and I don't think the sheriff ought to cherry pick who gets it and who not. I think it's fair to everybody else. When we talk about dangers, when we talk about problems, you've got teachers in the classroom, I'm tired of spending more money on dag gum prisoners and thieves than I am kids. I'm tired of it. And we all in this room are thinking about that. We spent 90-some million dollars on a dag gum jail for 600 people. That's more money than we spent on a school for 20-some hundred people. And you talk about dangers, it's, the Highway Department, I heard, painting the roads every day, got flagmen, and boys running their Walmart Bush Hawks, swinging rocks and going through somebody's window behind them. It's not only one, it's all of us. And if we're gonna do it for one, we're gonna do it for all of us. And if I have to vote for a tax increase, hell, I'll have to vote for it. I mean, I'm serious. And I'll leave it at that and touch back, but we're gonna do it for some, we're gonna do it for all of us.
Commissioner Probst, White, and Commissioner Meitz?
Thank you, Probst and Burden. I wanted to echo what Mark said, what Herschel and Dwight said. Dwight and Zane and I went over last week and met with Lee, and the first thing that Dwight, we went through the cell of that, said, somebody needs to go talk to Larry. And that's what needs to happen. We don't need to be in the middle of this, let them come to us, but I agree with these officers. Why would we punish Michael and Tony and Travis back here because they might be in a higher grade? We need to give everybody some, but we also need to give Highway Department some, need to give Teresa some. We can't do it for one, but that's not our job. That gentleman sat right over there, and his staff, and the mayor, and worked with the officers, but we can't break it down. If we can't give it to everybody, we shouldn't give it to anybody. But thank you for your effort, but it's a long way to come, but it's all up to us.
This was to bring light to the problem. There is a lot of problems.
A lot of problems.
That's why it says draft at the top.
Commissioner Meitz?
Thank you, Prost. I know that you're getting beaten up on a little bit, but I appreciate the discussion of all this because it needs to happen. It's not just the sheriff's problem, it is all of our problem. We all signed up for this. So, I just wanted to ask you, you mentioned something about cutting the bleeding now. I just want to make sure that we, going forward, my comment is that we have a plan. I don't wanna just cut the bleeding now and then four or five years, cut the bleeding again. I wanna really have a plan, no matter what we do.
And that's what we do. We write the check, we give these department heads the tools they need to do their job.
Yeah, I don't like it in the middle of it.
I'm quite sure that we give them this tool, they need to raise their base pay up, they need to take care of their employees, work on the recruiting and retention, that that bleeding and that loss of officers will be fixed. And again, this was a draft to bring attention to it, and I like these type of things because it gets everyone's blood pumping and they're aware that we have more than one little problem.
I appreciate that.
It is a problem across the board, and we're having to fight for every, everybody that we take into any office right now, whether it be Sheriff's Department, Teresa's office, anyone, will tell you that it's getting more difficult in the job market everywhere.
Well, just for the record, working with each one of you, I know that all of us support every single department in this county. We want this county as a whole to be the best county in the state of Tennessee. I know that all of us feel that way. But the sheriff is voted in by the people, and so whatever we do, we should trust the sheriff to do the right thing, whatever that might be going forward. I just, I don't want us to just keep throwing money at things. I know in the past, the commission has made plans with the other departments similar to, which I know this has to do with a vehicle, but either way, it's a plan. That's what I would like to see. I feel like that that is the fiscally responsible thing to do. Thank you.
Commissioner Ward?
Lot of comments and discussions. I can remember a day that I used to really hate to go to the tag office. There were some hateful people there. But that lady right up there, Teresa Jacobs, has turned that place around. Loved going to the tag office, lots of options, friendly people, things are great, great employees. Have y'all had to whip anybody over yet, had any fights? Have you been shot at? Have you been in any vehicle pursuits? Have you rammed another vehicle with your vehicle? Okay. That man sitting right back there, Scott Murray, used to make jokes to guys at the Highway Department. They were good for five or six vehicles, guys in one truck. Now, I came through my neighborhood the other day and got flagged down by a highway worker. Got flagged down, Scott. He said, sir, are you pleased with what we're doing in your neighborhood? He said, sir, absolutely. That man's turned that department around, you know? Sheriff Cassidy has turned the Sheriff's Department around. But to comment on a couple things as far as patrol slash corrections. But to comment on a couple of things, as far as patrol slash corrections, there's no difference. They're both dangerous jobs. I do both. I do both. I can honestly, I can honestly say that. I do both. Gradually from the police, okay? I'm a patrolman. I'm also slash correctional officers. But when those patrolmen catch those murder suspects and deal with that crime out there, they deal with it for thirty minutes, an hour, two hours. Well, then they bring that inmate, that guy to jail. Well, the correctional officers deal with them twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, for a couple of years, four, five, six. They fight them every day, they get piss thrown in their face, they get human feces thrown on them. Now we're a mental facility over there. When you ain't got nothing to do with a mental person out here, you have to lock, you lock them up. There's nowhere to send them. So then we have to deal with them all day. So to say that correction's not dangerous, and I know your point, but it's the same, it's the same, so you can't separate one from the other, okay? But I agree some with, you can't take medical help. I don't know, I think, well, I saw the film, did you see the film, the video? Pretty damn impressive. Six, six inmates simultaneously fall over. You got correctional officers, you got nurses, whoever is standing by is pumping six chests. They saved six lives that day. Six. Am I lying?
Two and then four. Same thing.
Where I come from, four goes to six. Okay? My point.
Right. I agree with you.
I'm not sure that you can, you can separate the two. What they save in lawsuit money that day will pay for pay raises. You know, and it's always tax increase, tax increase, tax increase. I'm not sure this is going to be a tax increase. You know? Larry, you jump in there anytime you want, I throw a figure that's wrong out here. I think the sheriff gave almost one point one back, I think it was one point zero seven six, back out of his budget. School resources, one point two million. That would probably be about nine hundred thousand. I mean, there's part of it, there's half of it, probably three, three fourths of it. Now, there is a solution. I have a solution, yes, I really do. I say we cross-train Ms. Jacobs' people, and we cross-train Scott's people, and anybody else that wants to do multiple jobs, and they can start carrying a weapon and a radio, and when that call comes out, they can leave the clerk's office and come help us. I think that would be a great solution. But we're not comparing apples to apples here. And I am not by no means downgrading anybody's job, they're all important. But we're talking about people that carry weapons, that are out trying to prevent crime, stopping crime, doing whatever means necessary, whether it's raping somebody, killing them, molesting their kids, that's what we get paid to do to stop that at all means. If it even means taking another human being's life, that's what we do. You can't compare those jobs. What those people do in the clerk's office, very valuable to the county. What the highway department does is very valuable, but it's not the same as a law enforcement officer, not even close. We're not comparing apples to apples here. Am I in that race? Yes, I am. Is Cole in that race, and Larry? Yes, we are. You know, you say, well, you're pushing for a race. Maybe. I'll sign a piece of paper right now that would exempt me from that race, if you give your law enforcement officers a race. Now, if I remember correctly, I was up here, they did, EMS got just a race, and nobody else got one. Couple of years, the teachers got fourteen percent out of their money, and nobody else got one. Teachers are very well, very well deserving of a race. But they're not law enforcement officers. When they have an issue over an unruly kid, or an armed suspect, they call us, we come. When Teresa has somebody in her clerk's office unruly and doing whatever, they call us. And we just had an officer, Angela, call at the Dollar Tree, Dollar General, Highway one twenty-six. Unruly man come into the market, into the Dollar General, asking for directions. Testa clerk went outside and said, hey, had been there for a little while. So the call come out, of a man asleep and possibly intoxicated. Okay? I had just drove by that car, going to Bristol, to that call. I was almost in Bristol when it came out. So when it come out, then, I'm ten ninety-seven, two officers arrived, ten ninety-seven on scene, within thirty seconds, shots fired, shots fired. I'm there within a minute, they had done killed that man. He pulled out a gun and tried to kill both those officers. That's what they get paid to do. You know? They get paid to create kills, uh, make them cars wrecked. That's what they get paid to do. Our officers fight every day, every day, every day. These other departments are not doing that. So when you start talking about right, I understand the whole county way, we got to do one for them, but we're not comparing apples to apples here. That's all I got to say. I mean, it's a different job. You know, so say that teachers are more qualified, more educated and more trained. I disagree. I disagree. Teachers are very important, should be paid well, but your law enforcement officers are up there too. Because I can promise you, when it hits the fan, when everybody's running away, we won't be in. I promise you.
Commissioner Crosswhite.
Thank you, Pro-Tip. I've loved all this, but it boils down to, this is not our job. That's finance. I would like to say every officer over there, give it a raise. I think we ought to give everybody a raise. And I agree, they, I'm glad, I'm glad they're out there. I'm glad they're out there, but it just boils down, and only other thing that bothers me, like Herschel said, why didn't we do this before we passed the budget? We would have fallen in line with other counties. Other counties had a twenty, twenty-five cent tax increase. We could have done that then, we could have given people more money, but we chose to not have a tax increase. I know you can't look back, it's one of my favorite sayings, you got to go forward, so, but we need to start right and go to the right department and see what they come up with. But don't leave out, don't leave out salary paper, and don't leave out highway paper, prison paper, I don't care who it is. Give everybody some.
Commissioner Crosswhite, that was, actually came from those salary chiefs over there that said, please just take care of my patrol, our corrections, our officers, we're taken care of, the sheriff will take care of us, take care of them in the hour or so. That's where that came from.
That's their job, they can do that.
Commissioner Pope.
Can't really compete with Commissioner Ward on what he said, but I think before we would go on to the phase two, with the detention facility, to put a bond on that, if the one open that we're building now, if it was open more, we could have said, we will have to do something, we are going to have to do something to retain.
Commissioner Iverson.
Just to clarify, because with the comments back and forth, now, what I said was, you'd have to pay me a lot more to do with that jail job than the other. You're right, they're both very dangerous, I would not want to be in that environment, but that's, that's something that's, and I, and very valuable. A couple of things you mentioned was EMS, yes, they did raise it, but that department worked with the Bailey's office, and they found a way to do it. The teachers, they worked within their budget, and they did that there as well, they got them a pay raise. I think that the sheriff, if he's turned in a million and seventy-six thousand dollars last year, and then the SRO money's come in, they can take that information and work with his office and say, hey, what can we do inside of our budget? And I think that's the path that this should take, is that the sheriff's office needs to make the lead on it. And I think that they have the ability to do that, they have the knowledge, they have the know-how, they have all of the data that we don't have. I don't think that this body can fix their problem. It's a problem that he has, he has the ability to do it, and I think that if they came together and said, this is what we're wanting to do, this is what we've got, and brought us a request, I'm grateful for that. And I want to see the request that they want made. I don't think that it's for us to fix it and say, this is what will help you, when we don't know fully what it is. And I think every elected office has that responsibility. I think that if the highway department says, we're going to have to raise our pay because we're not paying half what it is to get these truck drivers out here, I'm not going to be able to get more people, and Scott will tell you that now, that that's a fact, then he's going to have to say, this is what I need to fix this. And that's all I'm saying, is the sheriff's office has to come forward and say, this is what I need to fix it. And I really think that they could find the majority of that, if not all of that, by looking at their existing budget, work with the budget office, and the SRO money, and at that one point, or one million, one million seventy-six thousand, plus all that SRO money that's coming back, that's a chunk of money. They may be able to fix this entire thing, before it goes to the budget committee, we'd have to find out more money. Because taking money and throwing out a problem is not the answer. We need to sit back and let the sheriff, I mean, have they done exit interviews, is it all about money for the people leaving? It's, it's something that they need to come forward and say, this is what we need. That's all I'm saying, is that, and I'm not saying that anything is not wrong, I just think the sheriff is an elected office, and he needs to say, this is what we need, and bring it to us, not the other way around.
Commissioner Ward.
I agree, I agree with you. But I think we had a meeting right over there one day, and the sheriff came and tried to address some things, and then we had a, we had one storm out, and then we had one do a drum roll, and the cameras were on, and storm out, and say we were violating this and that. And everybody else was talking about how the meeting was fine, not sure what the problem was. But what's going to happen is, you're going to have a hundred million dollar jail, hopefully opened up in early twenty-five, that you can't staff, and then the day it opens, it loses certification. You know? And Ms. Harvey, I apologize, I want to apologize to you for wasting your, your time right now. I know you're not interested in this topic, because you're more about teachers, but there's a very highly qualified law enforcement officers over there. And it disappoints me.
Commissioner Ward, let's leave our comments.
Absolutely. It disappoints me that we had people onboard the last day or two, and now, all of a sudden, they jumped ship, and I mean, Joyce, you were sponsoring this, but now it's just totally the opposite, it's just, it's totally disappointing.
Commissioner Ward.
I want to let everyone that's name was mentioned respond, because that's what I would want for me, and that's what I want to give to each of you. But let's keep our comments, not of a personal level nature, but strictly took to the eye of, I allow a lot of discussion, but let's keep our comments not on a personal nature, but confined to the eye of. Commissioner Crosswhite, do you seek recognition?
Yes, sir. I'm not going to address this to anybody. I came up with the bright idea, I brought up budget, I think we need to bring up our starting salary for officers. Well, I'm off the finance directory. I didn't realize it wouldn't be fair. So, I was going to wait till Larry did his kind of thing, but somehow I got caught up in this, and got my name on the resolution to start with, but I think that was an error on Mr. Steadman's part, but like I said, I'm not addressing this to anybody. I want our, our county employees are our biggest asset. We've got to take care of them. We have got to take care of them. Our sheriff's department, we've got, we've got to keep these men safe. That's been my thing all along. I might not load it for the new jail, but I want Travis, Michael, Tony, officer five back there, all taken care of. So don't ever say that Joyce is going to dwell on this, because she's not, Joyce is listening, but this is not our job. It's finance, so, thank you.
Commissioner Harvey, you wish to take recognition.
Yes. It is our job, they got this problem to solve.
Okay, but before, before we move on, I allow a lot of discussion, because this is a very important discussion. Our county employees are our most valuable asset, but I won't allow any disrespect, and I know that sounds weird coming from such a sweet guy. Let's not disrespect each other. We can disagree, but we don't have to disrespect. And that, and that, and that goes for me too. Commissioner Stead, last word on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Pro-Tip. I think we've had some in-depth discussion here tonight. You can tell when people are passionate about things, that's when they tend to, tend to show their passions. This was brought to us by the sheriff's department, they, they did ask me to look into this, what we can do to fix this problem, and it is a recruiting, retention issue for them, and the law enforcement. And again, this is a draft, and will be taken to the budget, we'll go with it. Thank you, Mr. Pro-Tip.
What's your act, your desire is to run it on, set, on second next Thursday?
We'll run it on consent, but we don't have it done, so.
Oh, I never said we're going to put on consent.
We can remove it from the agenda for now.
That's what we're going to do. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Glover on item number five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution is to establish a policy to assure Southern County emergency medical services, UMS, has established a policy to have adequate funding for the department for the replacement of future ambulances on the county on a recurring basis in future years. Whereas Southern County UMS is vital service and remains the health of our citizens, as well as the, of our visitors to the county. Whereas Southern County's fleet of ambulances has six ambulances with over two hundred fifty thousand miles, and another five with over two hundred thousand. Whereas currently, we have five ambulances on order from ARPA funds to upgrade the fleet. However, after approximately a year, we are still uncertain as to delivery date. And whereas the new ambulances ordered today will take more than a year before delivery, which makes this policy necessary to ensure a timely ordering of future ambulances. And also, whereas, the most important part, that the Southern County Commission will on record providing a reliable plan for keeping a reputable fleet of modern, up-to-date ambulance services. And Gary Mays was here tonight, he had to leave. Gary presented. Is he still here? Sorry, Gary. Gary just did that for me to put him to the front, so he said he could do it, but anyway. Gary provided us with a capital plan. I'll run copies off of this and have it for each and every one of you, the ones that didn't get it tonight. And Gary, if you want to go, if you want to come up and take any questions, or anything on this at this time, that's a fine. Sam, this is what Gary provided me, so if you need something else, anybody here needing to ask me for it. If you'll notice this resolution, the dollar figures and so forth are not in this resolution. The reason those dollar figures are not in this resolution is, number one, we're going to be using the online gambling money that's provided back to the county each year, we don't know what that dollar figure's going to be, but all of that funding will go to this line. And also, we're going to be using some money at the end of the year, and through online sales tax situation, or some other things that we can do to make sure, if you'll notice in the resolution, this is a, this is a top priority for the administrative and the budget committee each year to, to work on this and get it done. So Gary did provide this plan for us. If any of the commissioners have any questions for Gary or for Larry on this, Gary, at this time, appreciate you coming up and hanging around, seeing if anybody's got anything for you. Or would you like to touch base on what we're doing here first, and then take your questions?
Sure, I can, I can take questions on, for me, the commissioner's up. Thank you, Mr.
We have Commissioner Glover. We have Commissioner Agar, seeking recognition. I recognize Commissioner Riker.
Thank you, Chairman Pro-Tip. And thank you, Ershal. I know this is, was a good discussion that a lot of us had during the budget season and everything. I'm just going to tell you, I think we get all the numbers and everything, we should run it through the committees, so you can have some good discussion on it personally, because I think there's way too much information for anybody to ask Director Mays tonight. I mean, it's been discussed, but yeah, I heavily support this, we all talked about it, but I do think that's probably one of the things, when you get all the information... it, but I do think that's probably one of the things, when you get all the information and everything, run it through the committees and kind of that way, we can ask the questions and everything.
It's gonna be hard to put the numbers in it, David, from what I just told you. We don't know what the online gambling tax money's gonna be from here to here.
No, I understand that. And like you said, how many people have this piece of paper right here?
They'll have it the next Thursday.
Yeah, and, and it's nothing that we have to run through, I think it's a very, 'cause we all did such good work on the fire truck rotation and everything. Uh, so some of us have a little better knowledge of it than everybody else. I was, I think that we're looking at it, 'cause we're actually trying to put a plan into place that for years, as Larry Bailey will definitely tell you, budgets are 12 months at a time. But we're, we're, this is a plan that we want to implement for the next probably six years, you know? So that's why I think it's, uh, especially for the new people, kinda how we did the fire truck rotation, to really understand what, what we're looking at and everything. So, thank you.
Fire trucks are on a five-year plan, volunteer fire departments, and it's basically what we're doing with this also. Anybody got anything for Gary that they want to add?
Commissioner Stedman seeking recognition.
This is for the sponsor. I wanted to vote some affirmative, put him in as a co-sponsor.
We're gonna name each person as co-sponsors. 'Cause six years, six years from now, we might not be here, Gary, and we want everybody to know.
That's right. This is one of those good things. And it's one of those things that's been needed for a while, and we learned from the fire truck rotation. This is gonna work, Gary, you guys do a great job.
Thank you.
Anyone have any other questions? Mr. Mays? Thank you, Mr. Mays. Always good to see you.
Thank you. I'll give each and every one of you a copy of this, send it to you tomorrow, email. Is that fine?
Commissioner Glover, what's your, Commissioner Glover, what, what's your desire, action on the resolution file?
I'm gonna do a first reading on it, and in that way, give everybody time to absorb it, and we'll go through it for tomorrow. And if there's any questions this week, feel free to call.
Sponsor, who's first reading? We'll hear this again next week.
I lost my fill, hope we come.
Without objection, move on to Isle Number Six.
Who do we have as sponsors on Isle Number Six?
Who, who would like to take up the mantle on Isle Number Six here?
It's your mayor. It's your, okay. How was coast watching on the bridge?
Feel, feel, recognize you, sir.
There's still some unfinished things from the TDOT, from what I understand, but to expedite the matters, Scotty's department has agreed to put up the $25,000 out of his budget to cover to where we can go ahead and get the contract signed by the mayor and the county attorney to go to TDOT so that this can be, we're gonna go to schedule and it not slow the progress down. What this is, is a revamping of the intersection of, of 93 or, and Bloomingdale Pike, which is right before you go up toward Waddle Oak Gap. It's gonna be a revamp of all of that. There's still some unfinished questions, from what I understand, as to what is gonna be our responsibility from the county standpoint. $25,000 is a payment on our initial investment in that, in that project.
You've heard the explanation. Anyone have any questions for the sponsor on Isle Number Six? Commissioner Calton.
Commissioner Crawford, what, what are they gonna do there?
Well, they have, they have already put the plans out and everything. It's just a matter of widening some of the lanes so that you're not, you know, when you're, if you're setting coming from 93, turning west on Bloomingdale, if you were going north and turning west on Bloomingdale, you could have three different lanes of traffic, two going toward Virginia and one turning left. The planning on, there's a medium there, that medium's gonna be shortened up, they're gonna be allowing a little more room at that intersection in, for any turning or any thoroughfare vehicles to go through that intersection.
Anyone else have questions for sponsor on Isle Number Six? And I've, I've written down for the sponsorship, Crawford and Stedman. I'll give that to, to Crawford and Stedman.
I think the original, the original, uh, resolution was, Zane was the sponsor and I was the co-sponsor.
Yep. Re-recognize, I didn't have any names on here, I only needed two tonight.
And Mr. Van Blue not being here, I don't know what his opinion is, but I would assume he would continue to be the co, the, the chair, the, I mean, the sponsor, and I would co-chair, uh, co-sponsor of the team.
Well, I recognize you for the final, final word on what, what's your desire to?
Well, again, hopefully we'll have more information coming to you next week.
So first reading, I will hear it again next week.
First reading, yes.
That completes our regular calendar, and I'm gonna read, uh, open the floor up for closing comments and announcements. We recognize Commissioner Aker.
Thank you, Chairman Pro-Tip. Since there's been a lot of discussion by a little committee, I chair of the budget. Since we have 100% attendance here tonight, I want everybody to stay over and let's try to figure out the calendar situation for the next little bit and everything. Thank you.
Commissioner Crosslight.
Are we actually closed now? Can we just make comments?
Yeah, we, you can, uh, closing, closing comments, announcements.
Announcements. Please go over to the Military Park, the Veterans Park. You will not see the monuments, we've got them covered up, but they're there.
Oh, no peeking.
No peeking, don't take the, take a bicycle off, but it, we are moving forward, and I cannot thank this commission enough for what you've done to make this possible, to honor veterans, Gary, Sam, my brother Kelly, all our veterans. It just warms my heart, so thank you.
Anyone else seeking recognition? Mayor Van Blue, would you like to address the commission, sir?
No, sir. Please, please.
Without objection, motion to adjourn.